Good evening. I call this meeting the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to Order, and I guess y'all all noticed it was 7:00 PM on October 6, 2011. Please join me in standing as James Goode leads the Board's opening prayer.
Our Father, we're so thankful for this fall weather, for the seasonal changes, but also the experience that all of us enjoy as we go through the seasonal changes, for the positive attitude we have about our community, our society, and especially the relationships that we have with each other. But Father, we're especially thankful for this time this evening, as this Board meets, as we discuss the business and affairs of this school district, that we can pause to take time to say thank you to some very important people, to some of our educators who make such an influence upon our students. We ask that you will especially bless them and continue to encourage them throughout the school year. Father, for the educational foundation, for all of the work they do with teacher grants and scholarships for our students, may they continue the great work and success they've had in being able to influence so many students in successful accomplishments in our school district. And Father, we ask always that special blessing upon all of our students, that they will have the encouragement of their teachers to continue to strive to do the very best and to have that success in the classroom that they all desire to have. And Father, bless us as we strive to serve you daily. And this is our prayer. Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads the Board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to the education and preparation of all students. The Board uses this mission to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the Board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all Board members are present, and we constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Burns for item 1A, welcome and recognition of guests.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. We are so honored that you are spending a part of your time this evening with us and to honor our guests here tonight. And we'll begin with our recognition of our VIPs. Tonight, we honor our newest members in the very important profession of teaching program. We have been honoring VIPs for over 25 years in this school district. Our VIP program is our way of saying thank you to our professional staff for being innovative leaders in learning, who diligently work to meet the needs of all our students. We want to recognize their efforts in making our schools a great place for quality learning to occur. To our honored guests, the Board of Trustees and the administration say thank you for being a member of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD team, and for being an innovator who has a positive influence on the lives of students. Educators, please come forward when your principal introduces you to receive your certificate. If there are staff members, friends, and family here tonight to celebrate this recognition, please stand as your VIP is introduced. And now, Ms. Klein, will you join me in the front to recognize our honored guests?
Good evening. My name is Dawn Rink, and I am the Principal of McCoy Elementary School. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Mrs. Heidi Kaywood as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Heidi is a third-grade teacher at McCoy, and has been at our campus for four years, and was a paraprofessional at Stark Elementary. She has overall five years of experience in CFB. Heidi is currently serving as a third-grade team leader and GT teacher of record. Ms. Kaywood has been involved with tutorials, Friday Night School, and Sunshine Committee. I still remember Heidi's first year as a classroom teacher. She said that all her life she had dreamed about her very first class of students, and that now her dream was coming true. Clearly, she is someone who is called to teach. When you call Mrs. Kaywood's classroom, and all these people standing up can vouch this, no matter the time or day, she will answer, "It's a great day in Ms. Kaywood's class!" Heidi's passion for learning is noticed by all and makes her classroom a happy and fun place to be. Heidi is genuine. What you see right there is what you get, and honest, which makes her trustworthy. She is forthright and will tell it like it is. She's a very energetic teacher, which engages her students. She is focused and pours her whole heart into teaching. Heidi is very conscientious of all different levels and abilities of her students, and works hard to help them all succeed. Heidi is very easy to work with. She listens and accepts ideas from others. Heidi is always smiling and lively. Her students love her because she keeps learning fun. Heidi is always ready to tackle any opportunity with an open mind and a positive attitude. She is devoted to the success of all students. Every teacher in the building loves his or her students, and Heidi is no exception. In fact, the love she has for her students radiates so strongly that anyone can feel it when they are around her and her class for just a few minutes. In keeping with the tradition of our outstanding faculty, Heidi is a true blessing in the lives of her students. Heidi is the wife of Grady and has been married four years. They have twin two-year-old daughters, Maddie and Paige, they just turned two, right, last week? Heidi also has a 15-year-old stepdaughter named Kaylee. Heidi is an exemplary teacher in person. She is what VIP is all about. McCoy Elementary and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Mrs. Heidi Kaywood as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening. I am Michelle Bailey, Principal at Ted Polk Middle School. It is a privilege and an honor to introduce our VIP, Amy Guerrero. Amy has taught at Polk for the past five years. She currently teaches three sections of eighth-grade social studies, two sections of speech, and one section of yearbook P&amp;N. I'd written a speech to tell you about Amy, but instead, I want to read the letter one student wrote about her. Mrs. Guerrero, well, what can I say? Mrs. Guerrero is a very unique and special teacher. Since the first day I walked into speech class, I knew it was going to be my favorite class because she greeted me with a smile. I've never met a teacher who actually gets really involved with the students and understands them the way Mrs. Guerrero does. She has a special heart that is full of joy. Just with her smile, my day gets better. She's so happy, cheerful, exciting, fun, and caring. To be honest, I can't explain how wonderful a teacher she is with my words. She is so creative with the lessons she prepares. I just want to thank her for all of her dedication to making education fun and exciting. Who better to receive the VIP award than the teacher who makes my day every day? And for the marvelous person who the world today is blessed to have, Mrs. Guerrero, may God bless her and her family. And this was written by Geraldine Lopez, an eighth-grade student.
Good evening, Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, and members of the School Board. I am Amy Miller, Principal of Sheffield Intermediate. I am here tonight to recognize Jonna Plumley as a member of the very important profession of teaching. This is Jonna's fifth year as an educator in CFB. Prior to coming to Sheffield, Jonna served at Blair for three years, and prior to that, she worked in Fort Worth ISD for 19 years, where she taught third grade and served as a librarian. At Blair and Sheffield, she has served the schools as librarian, and in the year that Jonna has been at Sheffield, she has made a lasting impact on high student achievement for all students. Personally, Jonna is married to Steve, and they moved to Carrollton in 2007 when she began her career in CFB. Jonna is so easy to work with, and she works quietly behind the scenes to help students and teachers make a connection to learning through everything that our library services in CFB have to offer. At Sheffield, one of our goals has been to increase reading levels and achievement on test and reading, and Jonna, I believe, has had an impact beyond the classroom in helping us reach those goals last year. Data, as we know, speaks volumes. Last year, we had a total circulation of 25,273 books in the hands of children. This figure is approximately 3,000 more books than our students read in the year prior. I love growth. Our average book checkout per student in the '09-10 year was 46 books, and we grew in the '10-11 year to 67.7 books. That's a growth of about 20 books more per student. We know at our school that high student achievement can't be accomplished just by the classroom teachers alone. Jonna does her part to help reading come alive. In one short year, she has increased our summer reading program from about five students to close to 30. The students had a wonderful party to celebrate their reading success, including handmade certificates for each child by Ms. Plumley, including the child's picture and pictures of every book title that the child read. It was an incredibly special time for our children. Students absolutely love to come to the library. Mrs. Hamilton, fourth-grade teacher, says that Jonna assists students in finding just the right book. She says that Jonna is definitely a factor in boosting their knowledge and appreciation of good books. Fourth-grade students reported that Mrs. Plumley has funny expressions and accents when she reads. Another fourth grader says that she puts other people first. From third grade, one student says, "I like Ms. Plumley because she helps me get wrestling books. She helps us find new or just right books." Mrs. Cage, third-grade teacher, says that in her six years at Sheffield, she has been the librarian who has shown so much patience and care with the students. Mrs. Cage says that she works to follow the language arts COL and work on skills students are mastering in class. It is her spirit daily which influences all at Sheffield to learn more about reading. It is truly an honor for me to welcome Jonna Plumley as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Mrs. Klein, members of the Board, and Dr. Burns, good evening. I'm Angie Doak, the Principal of Thompson Elementary. We are here tonight to recognize Farrah Raymond as Thompson's newest member in the very important profession of teaching. Farrah comes to CFB from Aggie land, and she has to be one of my favorite Aggies. I must admit, college football season is fun at Thompson. Farrah is a go-getter. Last year, she embarked on an additional challenge seeking and receiving a master's in educational administration from SMU. While in CFB, Farrah has been teaching in the dual-two-way program for our kindergarteners the last three years. This year, Farrah continues to teach in the dual-two-way program, but in third grade. Her students and parents couldn't be happier. Farrah takes part or leads many activities at our campus. She is the epitome of a hard-working, positive, reliable, and can-do professional. I am so proud to work along her side. Farrah is active in the Sunshine and Multicultural Committees. She participates in the Instructional Rounds team and is also one of the co-directors of the After the Bell Program. She is team leader and serves on CIC. Farrah is dedicated to the success of our students. After reviewing recent student data, Farrah quickly contacted district personnel to seek extra tutoring help. She takes initiative and is passionate about our work. To her teammates, Farrah is someone who gets the job done, no matter what it takes, and does it with a smile, and manages to get everyone smiling, too. Farrah is a superstar. She looks for bright spots each and every day, and she is always willing to help others. A couple of Farrah's students shared that Ms. Raymond is kind to others, and she helps all of the students learn. Ms. Raymond is funny, even when sometimes it is really, really necessary. Farrah is devoted to her third graders, teammates, and Thompson. She is truly remarkable. We love her at our school, and we are fortunate to have her be part of our Cougar team. Tonight, Thompson Elementary and CFB proudly welcome Ms. Farrah Raymond into the very important profession of teaching.
That does conclude our recognition tonight, but we'd like to share some district announcements with you for just a minute, so if you'll turn your attention to the screen.
Good evening, and welcome to another edition of the Board announcements for the month of October. We broadcast live right here from the Academy for Media Arts and Technology at RL Turner High School in Carrollton, and we are pleased to deliver to you the important news you need to know about the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District. Dr. Burns and his leadership team were really busy during the month of September, honoring the first schools who earned either an exemplary or recognized rating for the 2010-2011 school year. An incredible 31 schools either earned exemplary or recognized during last year. The schools visited by the team in September were Dan F. Long Middle School, recognized; DeWitt Perry Middle School, recognized; Kent Elementary, exemplary; Early College High School, exemplary; and to finish off our list for September, Country Place Elementary earned an exemplary rating for the 2010-2011 school year. Congratulations to all those schools for all your hard work. And to give all our students a break, schools will be closed on Monday, October 10th, for a campus holiday. But all the district employees out there, the district office employees, don't get too excited. Monday will be a normal workday for you. I guess that fried bubble gum at the state fair will have to wait a tad bit longer. Sorry about that. Another important date to type into your smartphone is Monday, October 17th. On that Monday, at 7:00 PM, the district will hold an informational meeting about the district's dyslexia program. The meeting will be in Room 4 of the Administration Building on 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. All Carrollton Farmers Branch parents interested in learning about the program should attend. Pledge to be drug-free as we celebrate Red Ribbon Week in CFB during the week of October 24th. The 2011 Red Ribbon Kickoff Breakfast will be on Friday, October 21st, at the Holiday Inn Select at 2645 LBJ Freeway in Farmers Branch. The keynote speaker will be DE Agent in Charge, James Capra. This is not to be missed. The Red Ribbon event supporters need sponsors for students selected from Metro Crest Area Secondary Schools to attend the breakfast. The Farmers Branch Chamber of Commerce is serving at this year's event. You can call (972) 243-8966 to register or sponsor students. The cost is $25 per person or student. The reservation deadline is October 14th. We had an awesome time at Turner's Homecoming Games, celebrating 100 years of existence for our incredible school. The stadium was literally busting at the seams with curtain students and RLT alumni. It was an awesome, awesome experience. You want to experience some great times for one of your own schools? Well, don't miss the Homecoming Games coming up at Standard Stadium this year. There are many homecoming football games at Standard Stadium for Carrollton Farmers Branch schools are as follows. October 14th, at 7:30 PM, we have Ranch View. Then on October 28th, at 7:00 PM, Newman Smith plays Frisco Centennial for their homecoming game. And then the last homecoming of the season is on November 4th, at 7:00 PM for Creek View. Well, thanks for tuning in this week. Don't forget the School Board will be involved in a training session on Thursday, October 13th, at 7:00 PM at the Administration Building. And of course, our next regular School Board meeting will be right here in the boardroom on Thursday, November 3rd, at 7:00 PM. We want to wish everyone a great night as we sign off from the cozy AMAT studios at RL Turner High School. Good night. For more information on what you saw tonight, or anything related to the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, please check out our website at
Ms. Klein, that concludes our recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. I just want to say what an honor and a privilege it is to help recognize the VIPs for the campuses that were here tonight. Thank you to the teachers that take time out of your evening to come and help us honor those that y'all are recognizing. It's really a privilege to hear about what all y'all are accomplishing in the classrooms, and really, if we want high achievement for all kids, it's through y'all that we get there. We're just here making our policies and our budget approvals. So, thank you for what you do. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break, but before we do that, and let people that need to leave, leave, we're going to come back after that and have a report by the superintendent and some presentations, and then a lot of business to go through. After the report from the superintendent, we're going to have audience for guests. So if during the 10-minute break, we encourage comments from our citizens or district employees, if anyone would like to register for audience for guests, there's a form outside the double doors here, and please give your form to Ms. Sharon Scrivener. At this time, it is 7:23, and we're going to come back at 7:33. Thank you very much. It's 7:33, and at this time, we're going to go forward with item number two, report by superintendent. Dr. Burns?
Ms. Klein, members of the Board, as is our practice, we always bring to the Board and the public a presentation around one of our programs or particular achievement accomplishments in the district. Tonight, we're pleased to present what we believe is a signature program in this district, and that's our Advanced Academic Services and all of the variety of things that they provide for our students. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mayor to introduce our presentation. Dr. Mayor?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. It's indeed a privilege to have the Advanced Academic Services Department within the Educational Services Division. Tonight, Ms. Jerry Charleboy, our Executive Director for Advanced Academic Services, is going to share a report with you about three anchor goals that the Advanced Academic Services Department has and the action strategies that will ensure those goals are met. CFB has long enjoyed a really stellar reputation regarding services for the talented and gifted, and services for all advanced learners. And as with any successful program, there are some passionate movers and shakers behind the program, and Ms. Jerry Charleboy is certainly one of those. Her team of specialists, the principals, and teachers who work with these children day in and day out. CFB is committed to make sure that all students, and all means all, have an education that stretches them and educates them to their potential. So, I would now like to turn it over to Ms. Charleboy.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, and School Board members. Pardon me. Thank you for this opportunity to share some of the multiple facets of Advanced Academic Services. As our mission states, we work to provide a quality education for all students in CFB and to support our gifted learners. Advanced Academic strives to support each of our district's supporting objectives. We follow the Texas State Plan to provide comprehensive services for our gifted and talented students with the belief that all children should experience an academically challenging education that enables them to maximize their potential. In order to continuously increase student achievement, we have set these three goals. Number one, to ensure a comprehensive GT identification process. As you know, our district is unique in that we have a two-tiered program, ACE and LEAP. We continue to strengthen our screening process using a large toolbox of assessment and identification tools. Approximately 9% of our student population is identified. Our second goal is to ensure advanced students are provided quality services across the district, beginning in kindergarten and continuing throughout high school. And the third goal is to ensure high performance for our advanced students. For goal number one, these are some of the tools that we use at the elementary level to identify our students. We begin with early assessments, such as the Koi in the primary years. It partners with the NNET, the Naglary Nonverbal Ability Test. These are the two assessments that begin the screening process. We also use our MAP data to identify the student's achievement. The MAP assessments are administered at fifth grade and, beginning this year, at the second grade level. We have learned a key instrument in the identification process is a child's portfolio, what he or she can produce. Our specialists are making a concerted effort to provide multiple trainings for teachers and counselors to help them develop strong portfolios that reflects the child's production. The chart shows the breakdown of our elementary GT identified students. At the secondary level, our identification process includes pre-AP potential, MAP data, and Duke University Talent Identification Program data to help our counselors, teachers, and specialists identify students who should be screened for GT services. This accompanies a parent, a teacher, or advocate coming forward with a recommendation. And the chart shows the breakdown of our secondary GT identified students. LEAP is a highly sought-after program by parents within our district as well as outside of our community. Last spring, we tested 145 students, kindergarten through eighth grade. 111 of them, approximately 77%, enrolled in Carrollton Farmers Branch. 24 of that 111 were identified for LEAP. The LEAP identification process is a more in-depth process, which includes IQ testing and an interview. For our second goal, to ensure our students receive quality services, we offer many opportunities to meet their various needs. Beginning at fifth grade, we identify students for our pre-AP courses in the four content areas, language arts, math, science, and social studies. Field and Perry offers AP Spanish to their native Spanish speakers. 25 of the 48 students that took the AP exam in May of 2011 received college credit as eighth graders. Then last year, over 600 students from our six middle school campuses Then last year, over 600 students from our six middle school campuses prepared during the fall semester in their area of academic strength for the UIL competition. Campuses are currently beginning to create their teams for this year's UIL competition. This event provides the first step into the field of academic competitions and practical training for their future. And then Duke University identifies students at seventh grade for the Talent Search Program. They encourage students to challenge themselves and invites them to take either the SAT or the ACT. This year, 686 seventh-grade students in Carrollton Farmers Branch qualified for the Duke TIP recognition. At each of our high schools, they have an academic decathlon team. This program provides an opportunity for students to experience the challenges of a rigorous academic competition. It is purposely designed to include students from all academic backgrounds. Carrollton Farmers Branch offers the continuum of international baccalaureate educational programs from kindergarten through 12th grade. The IB programs encourage students to embrace and understand the connections between traditional subjects and the real world. Good Elementary just received their reauthorization in June. Both of our primary programs help students demonstrate their 21st-century skills of research, technology, and presentation skills through exhibitions. The students' and parents' pride at all of our IB schools is reflected to be enrolled in an international school. The IB program has become the culture of these schools. Advanced Academic Services has a strong partnership with our Association for Gifted and Talented. This group of parents continues to grow and seek quality services for their children with ardor and diligence. They work with us to present multiple opportunities for our families. In a couple of weeks, we'll be offering our fourth district-wide event for parents since the beginning of school this year. Dr. Sylvia Rim is coming to speak on Parenting the Gifted Child. Advanced Academic's Advisory Committee was formed in the spring of 2010. The purpose was to strengthen communication for our elementary ACE program. We will continue to meet this year with a focus on the transition to middle school and opportunities for students. This is a photo of our Fall Forum from September, I believe it was the 22nd. I think you were busy in a board meeting that night. We had almost 200 parents attend to learn about the services and programs that Carrollton Farmers Branch offers for our advanced learners. There was a short introductory session and then breakout sessions by grade levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. It was very informative and well-received. For our third goal, Ready Step will be administered to every eighth-grade student next Wednesday, October 12th. This assessment is aligned with the PSAT and the SAT. It will provide us a longitudinal view of our students and their college readiness. The PSAT gives students and teachers a report with feedback on the strengths and the weaknesses and the skills that are necessary for college study, critical reading, writing, and math problem-solving. It also provides practice for the SAT. Our eighth graders will receive a similar report that provides feedback from their Ready Step assessment. We offer many opportunities for our students to help prepare for these rigorous assessments. Our summer PSAT and SAT program provides practice and strategies for our sophomores and juniors. Every year, Dr. Burns invites the PSAT top 100 sophomores to our superintendent's Scholar Night to recognize their achievement. Another program that we've had great success with is Revolution Prep. This program prepares students for SAT and ACT with instructors who have exceptional test scores themselves. Students average a 250-point increase with this six-week course. And of course, we have our Advanced Placement and Diploma programs too, at the high school. Laying the Foundation is a teacher-training program housed at Ranch View High School with each summer that helps prepare students for the Advanced Placement courses and future academic success. Last year, Vivian Field was invited to participate in a large college readiness initiative from TEA. This two-year grant is designed to prepare middle school students for upcoming college readiness standards, mainly the end-of-course exams in English and algebra. Field has partnered with America's Choice to work with their language arts and math departments to build teachers' knowledge of the curriculum and improve student achievement. The commended scores at Vivian Field have increased in four of the five test areas. They attribute these gains to the work the teachers have committed in implementing in their classes. An additional opportunity we have been afforded is the Advanced Placement Training and Incentive Program at RL Turner. LBJ Infrastructure Express has awarded over $500,000, with the primary goal being to increase the number of students taking AP courses and receiving qualifying scores on AP Math, Science, and English exams. We partner with AP Strategies to provide teachers and students with the content, skills, and strategies to be successful. There are structured incentives to foster AP success. In October of 2010, we administered the PSAT to over 1,700 sophomores. That was a 9% increase in participation for Hispanic students and a 5% increase for African-American students compared to the previous year. There was increased performance for both populations as well. We did better than the state and the nation in math. The number of juniors was stable overall, but a slight increase in participation for Hispanic and Black students. Their scores were higher in both populations as well. As you probably know, College Board's mantra is equity and excellence, and that's what we pursue as well. For the SAT Reasoning Test, the mission is to connect students to college success and opportunity. Our participation rate increased by 11% in one year, and last year, there was an additional 10% increase. CFB exceeds the mean scores in Texas in all areas and exceeds the nation in math. The ACT assesses students' general educational development and their college readiness. About one-third of our CFB students take the ACT. There are four multiple-choice tests that cover the four skill areas, math, English, reading, and science. The mean scores from CFB exceed those in Texas public schools in all areas and all but English in the nation. Looking at the Academic Performance Index by ERG, Educational Resource Group, when we compare our district's SAT and ACT deviated ranking of the largest 200 districts in the state, we rank 24th for the SAT mean and 25th for the ACT. Compared to a similar district, HEB's 58th and 40th, and then Richardson ISD ranked 18th for SAT and 7th for the ACT. This chart shows a five-year comparison of our AP participation and performance. As you can see, we've increased our participation by 576 exams this one year. There has been a dramatic increase in one year, reaching almost 14%. This chart shows our AP participation by ethnicity. Dramatic gains have been made by our Hispanic subpopulation. Even though our Black participation is not where we want it, it is a 44% increase from last year. The Hispanic population is a 28% increase. We need to continue this path. This is the five-year comparison for our AP performance. The increase in our qualifying scores is very close to the state's increase of 6.9%. Our Hispanic population, the participation increased by 28%, and performance increased Dr. Burns, Board of Trustees, I earnestly thank you for your support in providing exceptional and exemplary services for our students in Carrollton Farmers Branch. I know our parents thank you and often share their appreciation with me. However, I would like to give one of our students the opportunity to share his journey with you. I'd like to introduce Sodman Reza. He is a senior at Ranch View High School. He's an identified LEAP student. He's also a National Merit semifinalist. Sodman?
Hi, nice to meet you, everyone, every single one of you guys. First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Charleboy and the Board of Trustees for giving me an opportunity to speak today. Let me reintroduce myself. My name is Sodman Reza. I've been a part of this school district since the fourth grade, when I entered Los Feliz Elementary. And the very next year, I moved to McCoy as part of the LEAP program, and I've been, I was a part of the LEAP program through eighth grade. And I left the district for two years, in ninth and 10th grade, and I attended Northfield's Preparatory. But I decided, my parents and I jointly decided that Carrollton Farmers Branch was the best opportunity for me to succeed in the real world, and therefore, I decided to rejoin Ranch View last year as a junior. And I'm a rising senior this year, and I'm on track to complete my IB Diploma program and graduate with, hopefully, a diploma.
We hope so, too.
Yeah, crossing my fingers. And go to college next year as well. Emory University for Go Sweda Business Program. I'd like to say that I really do appreciate CFB ISD's academic services for students because I think it gave students a very, a very unique opportunity for achievement in terms of what they could do outside of classes. For example, in the LEAP program, we did something like, we called something like, it was called DEAC, which was like a math program. It was a math competition where each of the students in fifth grade and fourth grade, they took a math test, and if they scored above a certain rank, they'd get patches. That instilled a value of competitiveness within the academic system within us, and it has allowed us to continue to be, continue to improve ourselves. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me. Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
There any questions for the board?
Okay. Thank you. I think, I think the broad variety of programs that we offer our students with the Advanced Academic Services is outstanding.
Oh, thank you.
Any other comments, board? Questions? And thank you for the student who took time out of, I'm sure, your busy evening to come and address us. Dr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Klein. Again, we feel like we have one of the premier programs for talented and gifted in the state. But it's not just about the program, it's about the results. And I think that was what's important for us to report to you tonight, is that those students should be achieving at high levels, and they are. And so, we're very pleased with that. Our next report, Ms. Klein, will be from our Educational Foundation, and it's my honor to introduce Mr. Owen DeWitt, who is the Chairman of the Foundation Board. Mr. DeWitt is a strong proponent of public education. If you're around him, he will talk and talk and talk about the values of public education and how much he supports it. So he's a fine leader to serve on that Foundation Board. So, Mr. DeWitt, we're going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Well, good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Burns Administration, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. Can you tell I ran for office one time before? Or actually, twice, I should say, successfully, and one, thank God, not successfully. My name's Owen DeWitt, as Dr. Burns said, a former trustee from a district, sister district. I love kids, and more importantly, I love teachers. And I'm married to one. And tonight, I want to share a little bit about the new vision going forward of the Education Foundation. This is the last year of our partnership, a financial arrangement that's been going on for years, but I want to show you what the future has for us, and I think it will excite you hopefully as much as it excites me. And I look forward to it. This, coming up next, I should flip the little chart here, is quite an extensive list of all the members of our board currently. It's about 20 members strong, and we have a couple of more positions that we hopefully will fill shortly. Additionally, we have Advisory Group, as you would recognize some of those names, hopefully, as your fellow trustees, as well as our superintendent. And Steve Edwards, which is our Executive Director, is out here in the audience tonight as well. But moving forward, I like brief reports, and hopefully, you do as well, and I try to keep it fairly colorful for you so you wouldn't feel like you were going to sleep. But we've got, right now, in the middle of our employee-giving campaign, we believe this is going to be the strongest year ever, even in a downturn economy. We're pushing for every employee to make a $5 per pay period donation. We think that'll just make life much easier for everybody and will fund many more, many more, quote, "many more" grants. We love to give out the grants. I personally think that's the greatest love period. We were talking earlier in the, before the meeting about handing out the diplomas, which is a lot of fun, but you hand a teacher $300, you'd have thought you'd have given them a million dollars. We're going to continue to do the community push, obviously. Casey's Run partnership is still there. And of course, the Miles Foundation, we're working on another grant towards that. And then the last one, we'll talk a little bit more here shortly. There is one missing, and we've just going to let it go for that for now. If you have a question about the previous relationship, I'd be more than happy to visit with you, one-on-one. This is some of the community outreach that's going on. As you can see, we just sponsored New Teacher Lunch. We've got the Marketing Foundation. You can see, I'm not going to read those to you, but I want to make sure you understand that we use an email database extensively. We're very progressive in that, and we think that's the easiest way to reach out and touch folks and keep them abreast of what's going on. And then this is our major development program that's still happening, which looks like a repeat here. And this is something that I wanted to share with you that we're going forward with. And this is in partnership with the district and the Fine Arts Department, and this is one of the submittals, and one of the better submittals, for a greeting card or holiday card program where you'll be able to go online and even customize the internal greeting. This is what the back would be, and we'll help customize that as well. So you could order your Christmas cards, or your holiday cards, or your Valentine's cards, using the artwork from the district and the very talented students that are right here in the district. We're very, very excited about it, and I'll show you a couple of more. They're just phenomenal. This is just going to be, to us, an opportunity to not only showcase the district in a different way, but it also rewards these students in having their works shared across the entire district and maybe even across the entire nation. So we look forward to doing that. Now down to the nuts and bolts of it, which is what I should give you before I leave. These are the new scholarships. Wanted to show you, we're still at 50 scholarships we're managing. We gave away 19 grants in just a very short period of time, in the next couple of years. So, that's what's on the horizon a little bit. This is a better breakdown for you to see how the monies have been awarded since the foundation's been in existence. $1.6 million approximately. You can see about $400,000 of it has gone to teacher grants, so quite a few dollars have gone in. And again, that's my personal first love, to see those teachers smile when you give them the monies. And we were talking earlier about one group, we're purchasing iPads for a special project, and I'd just love to see that, some iPods and things of that nature, that they can't normally get out of the funds from the school campuses or have to take out of their own pocket, so it works out nice. You can also see the campus grants, there've been quite a few of those. And then, of course, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the scholarships. Of course, we've handed out nearly half a million dollars' worth of scholarships in the timeframe the foundation's been around, and hopefully, it'll continue to grow at a very rapid pace. The next 12 months are going to be very busy for us, Steve and the board, as you see going forward. These are the things that we're pushing to have as a goal-setting for ourselves for the next 12 months, and very worthy cause. And so, I would challenge you to, and you being all, not just the Board of Trustees, to use us as a tax-deductible donation to use us as a tax deductible donation and give back to the school district. We will put the money to great work, I promise you, and you will not be sorry that you did. As I said, we'll take some photos, and Cindy's been very good about putting some of those pictures up of recipients of scholarships and grants along the way, and it's been very, very rewarding work. Please, think about ordering your holiday cards. The website will be up, and that is CFPkidscards.com. Again, CFPkidscards.com. So, that should be up next week, and if you haven't purchased your holiday cards yet, please do so. We'd love to see you utilize those. And that concludes my report. I told you to be brave, I've been there in your seat before.
Thanks, Ellen. Mr. Goode?
One question. Do you not have some events coming up shortly?
Yeah, I let Steve actually do those. There are some big events coming up, and they weren't in my presentation, I don't know why. You want to talk about, you've got, well, the Supreme Gail, but you got the breakfast?
We have the Unsung Heroes Teacher Appreciation.
Did you get the microphone? Please.
Your turn.
I'm sorry. Recognize unsung heroes, teachers that have gone above and beyond their normal scope of duties to enrich the lives of their students and family members, or their parents. And so, principals have given us nominations, and we will invite the principals and nominees to come to the breakfast, and at that time, we will bring the 10 finalists to the stage, and then we'll announce the Unsung Hero Teacher of the Year Award. State Senator John Corona will be our guest speaker, and so, it should be a great event, but the focus will be on the teachers, and all the money we raise will go to our teacher grant and student scholarship programs.
Are there any other comments or questions? Ms. Klein?
If I may, Ms. Klein, for our viewing audience, if you have not become a part of this organization, I would encourage you to consider it, to look into it, to come to these events, to see what it is that this organization provides for our teachers and for our students. We are at a time now of budget issues, and this organization has always been important since it was formed in 1998, 97, 1997. I should remember that, I was on the steering committee. But absolutely, get involved with it and see what they're doing, and we greatly appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Ms. Klein, that concludes my report tonight, and we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. At this time, we'll go to item 3, Board Operations, 3A is Audience for Guests. We do have three requests to speak at Audience for Guests tonight. Two of them pertain to an agenda item at the end of the meeting, Agenda Item 3G and 3H, with the two people who signed up to speak, Ms. Wood and several other people with Zell Corporation. Is there a problem with y'all speaking just around that item instead of at this time? Is that okay? And then, the other Audience for Guests person that we have at this time is Latha Shivakumar. And we have a three-minute time period, and it, as I, since I've called your name. Mr. Goode will be keeping track, he'll be our timekeeper. I'd like you to come up to our microphone up here at the front and state your name and address.
Hi, everybody, my name is Latha Shivakumar, and my address is 1425 Kings Mill Court, Copel, Texas 75019. My child is a student at McCoy Elementary, and my question pertains to a point that was raised by Dr. Burns at the State of the District speech last month. He had mentioned that the district is considering open enrollment as a means to raise more funds, and I was wondering if at this point, Dr. Burns or any of the board would be having any more details to disclose to us about the plan, and, you know, what school, or what cities would be invited to participate in the open enrollment? And this question is based on concerns among parents about how it would impact our students in the school district.
Ms. Klein, if I could, the board cannot respond, but I'd be glad to. The board has scheduled a work study for November the 17th, where they'll be getting information from the staff, what we've researched, and all the kind of details that they need to consider if we move forward with it. So, that will be November 17th. We'd love to have audience here to hear the dialogue and to see where we're headed. That doesn't mean we'll know at that time, it just may give us direction, how to proceed, but that'll be the time where we'll really look into all of the pros and cons of that opportunity, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll move to item 3B, Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. These items are routine in nature, and the board has, has had ample information in advance. Tonight, our Consent Agenda item is... long. Just a second.
Take a deep breath.
3B1, Consider Approval of Temporary Disability Leave. 3B2, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Blalack 8th Graders to Travel to New York City and Washington DC, May 11th to 14th, 2012, to Experience American History that they have studied during this school year. 3B3, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Creteview Speech Team to Travel to Atlanta, Georgia, January 26th to 30th, 2012, to Attend the Emory University Speech Tournament. 3B4, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Creteview Speech Team to Travel to Hattiesburg, Mississippi, February 3rd through 5th, 2012, to Attend Hattiesburg High School Speech Tournament. 3B5, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Creteview Choir and Orchestra to Travel to Nashville, Tennessee, March 10th through 13th, 2012, to Experience Musical Interest in Nashville. 3B6, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Creteview Chevals to Travel to Los Angeles, California, March 22nd to 25th, 2012, to Attend Lights, Camera, Music, Performance, Millennium Dance Complex Training. 3B7, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Creteview Speech Team to Travel to Union City, California, May 10th to 14th, 2012, to Attend the National Individual Events Tournament of Champions. 3B8, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Newman Smith Dance and Theater Arts Students to Travel to New York City, March 9th through 12th, 2012. 3B9, Consider Financial Report, August 2011. 3B10, Annual 2010-11 Tax Collection Report. 3B11, Consider Approval of the Memorandum of Understanding for the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, JJAEP of Denton County. 3B12, Consider All Matters Related to Settlement of Hail Damage Insurance Claim, Estimate of $484,795, including Authorization to Proceed with Work and Fund Payment of $100,000 deductible with fund balance. 3B13, Consider Interlocal Agreements with the City of Carrollton Farmers Branch and Irving Police Departments for Student Resource Officers. 3B14, Consider Approval of Amendment 1 to Dallas County Schools Interlocal Agreement to Perform Student Transportation Services. 3B15, Consider Approval of Purchase of Dish Room Sanitation Service and Supplies. 3B16, Bless you, Consider Approval of Purchase of Parent Notification Service for 2011-12 School Year. 3B17, Consider Approval of Purchase of Library Furniture for Good Elementary. 3B18, Consider Approval of Purchase of Avea Core PBX and Intuity Voicemail Maintenance Support. 3B19, Consider Approval of Purchase of Cisco Smart Net Renewal Agreement. 3B20, Consider Approval of Purchase of Cisco Base Renewal. 3B21, Consider Approval of Purchase of VMware Software Support Renewal. 3B22, Consider Approval of Purchase of Net App Support and Renewal. 3B23, Consider Approval of Purchase of High School Computer Projection and Wireless Access Upgrade. 3B24, Consider Approval of Purchase of CTE Lab Computers. 3B25, Consider Acceptance of Purchasing Report for the Period September 1st to October 6th, 2011. 3B26, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-08-201-3 for Paperback and Hardback Books. 3B27, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-07-132-2 for Technology Applications Consulting. 3B28, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-09-221-1 for Golf Supplies and Equipment. 3B29, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-08-191-2 for Plumbing Equipment and Supplies. 3B30, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-09-021-2 for HVAC Equipment and Supplies. 3B31, Consider All Matters Related to the Districtwide Repair and Replacement of Hail Damaged HVAC Condenser Coils, Including the Determination that the Competitive Seal Proposal Process is the Best Delivery Method for Construction. 3B32, Consider All Matters Related to the Competitive Seal Proposal Process for the Districtwide Repair and Replacement of Hail Damaged HVAC Condenser Coils, Including the Delegation of Authority to Fully Review, Evaluate, and Rank Proposals, Negotiate a Contract, and Make a Recommendation to the Board of Trustees. 3B33, Consider Declaring Six Mowers and Two Trailers Surplus and Authorizing Them for Disposal. 3B34, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board of Trustees Special Meeting Held August 25th, 2011. 3B35, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board of Trustees Work Study Meeting Held September 1st, 2011. And 3B36, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Held September 1st, 2011. That is all of our Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Mr. Shore?
Madam President, I'd like to pull item 12 and item 31.
Are there any other items that the board would like to pull for further discussion? Mr. Goode?
Item 23.
Is that all?
Yeah.
So, is there any, is there a motion?
That's not on the Consent Agenda, see, it's CND.
Is there a motion to approve the remaining consent, the Consent Agenda as amended? Mr. Shore?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of items 12, 31, and 23.
Ms. Watten, seconded that motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, thank you. Mr. Shore, would you like to discuss 12 and...
Yes, when I read them, it seemed like we were agreeing to accept an amount of money in item 12 for some hail damage, and then in item 31, we're authorizing the district to go get some bids to see what it's going to cost to repair the hail damaged property. And, and I've subsequently learned that what I thought wasn't exactly correct. Isn't that true, Mr. Hyatt?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shore. The related item was related to hail damage that our air conditioning units on the roofs of several of our buildings incurred, and the insurance company has done an evaluation and estimated repair cost of, of $484,295. However, and as we've confirmed, that is just their preliminary estimates, we will, we will execute the repairs on the equipment, and once those repairs are completed, the actual final reimbursement of the insurance company will be the actual cost of the repairs less the deductible.
So, if we approve item number 12, we're not signing a release that lets the insurance company off the hook for any further?
Yes, sir, that's correct. All you're doing is authorizing us to proceed with the repair.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shore?
I move that we approve item 12 and item 31.
Second. Ms. Chaffin, seconded that motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous. Did that include both 12 and...
Yes.
And 31? Okay, Mr. Goode, number 23?
Item 23 discusses what we have done, makes reference to what we have done previously with media carts, and we're now making a transition away from media carts. So, I thought it'd be good for us to understand what we're doing and what's, and what happens to all these media carts also. And, Dr. Burns?
Yes, Mr. Goode. Dr. Bernie's here, and he can address those issues, and I agree with you, Mr. Goode, it'd be good for the public to kind of know where we're headed in terms of the next wave of technology. So, Dr. Bernie?
Good evening. This item 23 refers to a replacement cycle for all the projection and sound systems in our high schools. So, it's hard to imagine, but it's been nine years since we've put those original carts in on wheels with projectors on carts, and they're mobile. The, the new things that we're putting in, they're ceiling mounted projectors, and they also have built-in interactive capabilities, like in, you know, the old days of a year ago, we had to buy an interactive whiteboard to do interactive capability. That's all built into the projector now, so we're, that's part of the projector. And we're also adding a really high-quality speaker system into each of the classrooms because we know multimedia includes sound. So, the projectors will be mounted, the cart that was in the middle of the room will be either pushed out of the room, or we, when we did this at Ranchview, Ranchview was our proof of concept for this, Ranchview High School, some of the teachers pushed the carts, excuse me, some of the teachers pushed the carts up against the, the wall and put their document camera on that. Some of the teachers took their document camera, put it on the desk. All that is still projected through the projector. And so, as we move into this mobile wireless personal technology world, we do know that good, good projection and good sound will still be important for our classrooms. Again, saving space, plus decreasing a lot of M&amp;O costs, replacing these old, old things that are out there.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I move that we approve Agenda Item 23, which is Consider Approval of Purchase of High School Computer Projection and Wireless Access Upgrade.
Is there, Mr. Shore?
Second that.
Motion by Mr. Goode, seconded by Mr. Shore. All those in favor?
Thank you.
That is unanimous. At this time, we're now at Item 3C, Consider All Matters Related to Changes to Section 11.253 of the Texas Property Tax Code, Redefining Goods in Transit, Including Pulling a Public Hearing Providing for the Taxation of Such Goods.
This time, we'll ask Mr. Hyatt to, to lead this for us, so, Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein. This is a relative, a technical issue related to certain goods in transit's tax, the Texas Property Tax Code. I've asked Anna Brady, our Texas Assessor Collector, to come briefly explain to you what this item is. This specific Agenda item is to allow you to have a public hearing on the item after she explains it to you. So, Ms. Brady?
Changes to Section 11.253 of the Texas Property Tax Code are effective October 1st. These changes redefine the term "goods in transit" and will exempt from taxation the appraised value of such property beginning January 1st, 2012. Goods in transit refers to personal property that has moved in and out of our district to another location in state or outside of the state. A provision was added to this change that would allow districts to opt out of this exemption by conducting a public hearing for anyone to voice concerns. After the hearing, the board, the board would issue a resolution on the matter, and the property would remain taxable. So, we would like to request a public hearing at this time to address this item.
So, at this time, we'll open the public hearing and see if there's anyone that would wish to address the board regarding this subject.
If you, you might want to, no, you don't. You might want to ask him if they'd like to speak now or later. Excuse me, you're right.
Is there anybody that would like to address the board? Hearing none, seeing none. I can close the public hearing?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That actually concludes that item. There's a subsequent item, Item 3D, it's a related item. Ms. Brady?
3D is Consider Resolution Providing for Taxation of Goods in Transit.
There's a resolution in your packet, and we would ask that it would be, do you want me to read it, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. Whereas the 82nd Texas Legislature in special session during 2011 has enacted Senate Bill 1, which amended Texas Property Tax Code 11.253 to prohibit a taxing unit from taxing certain goods in transit in a tax year that begins on or after January 1st, 2012. And whereas Texas Property Tax Code 11.253-J1, as amended, allows the governing body of the taxing unit to take action on or after October 1st, 2011, after conducting a public hearing to provide for the taxation of such goods in transit. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District have conducted a public hearing as required by Section 1ND, Article...
8.
8. Texas Constitution is of the opinion and finds that it is in the best interest of the district to tax such goods in transit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that by the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, that goods in transit, as defined in the Texas Property Tax Code 11.253-A2, shall be subject to taxation by the district as permitted by subsection J1 of the Texas Property Tax Code... as permitted by subsection J one of the Texas Property Tax Code eleven point two-five-three, and that the exemption prescribed by subsection B shall not apply to the taxing unit, passed and adopted this sixth day of October, two thousand and eleven.
Board, is there any discussion or questions about this item? Mr. Fleming?
Well, basically what this, uh, what I'm reading, it says that, um, normally goods in transit for folks that, 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 do not understand that phrase, is anything kind of coming into this, into the city, uh, would not be, uh, no, no ad lib tax on the inventory as long as it's coming or going. So thus, what this does, just keeps, keeps the exemption from the school district, am I correct? Got you, as it should, as it should be.
I might add, I discussed this with a couple of other surrounding entities, uh, not all of them have, has dealt with it yet, but particularly the City of Farmers Branch is also exercising the same option to continue to, uh, tax these. So, uh, even though we did pass a freeport exemption a few years ago, uh, at this time, we're not recommending we extend this exemption to these goods.
Mr. Shore?
I'm struggling to see what would be a reason for us not to pass this resolution. Is, is there a valid reason for us not to?
There is, there, there is, uh, the philosophical reason of economic development that, that would induce more local, uh, flow-through inventory business. As far as a business tax, tax generating, uh, reason, there would be no reason not to pass this.
Normally businesses like, like for, um, it's, it's attractive, you know, that's the only reason why it's put out there. It's, it's, you know, if you can get municipalities or, or competing for, for business, and, uh, and you get exemption on our goods, then we'll come to your city. That's, that's all that it's used for.
Exactly.
So it's community relations, business-friendly?
Right.
Economic development kind of?
Absolutely, and in this particular one, we've, we've received, uh, no contact, and there's been no business in, in interest as far as contacting us to encourage us to not, uh, pass this resolution. As you recall in the past, we've have, had business relations when we passed our freeport exemption and, and developed, uh, some contact and rationale for, uh, exempting certain property taxes.
Is there any reason why, are we precluded, if we vote to pass this resolution tonight? Are we precluded from granting exemption at some time later?
I believe the answer to that question is yes. We actually have a tax attorney in the office some, in building somewhere.
Good backdoor hide.
But Anna, do you, do you know the answer to that question? I think this is a once-in, always-in.
Yes, yeah.
Decision. Dan, do you know the answer to that, off the top of your head?
Um, pretty much.
The microphone?
Can I get the microphone, Dan? Sorry, this is Dan Bearden, he's with, um, the firm of Bob Luna and Associates, and they do some tax work for us.
Uh, for purposes of, uh, this law, once you've decided to opt out of this exemption, it's going to be permanent.
Unless the law changes.
Unless law changes, yeah, and, and you could probably expect more changes on the horizon, as they've been doing so often with the legislature.
Thank you, Dan.
Are there any other questions, Board?
I think it's in the district's best, best interest to go forward with it.
Is that a motion, Mr. Fleming?
I'll let Mr. Goode do that.
Mr. Goode?
I move we adopt the resolution as read.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Goode, a second by Mr. Fleming, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Item three E, consider all matters related to the nomination of a candidate for the Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Yes, Ms. Klein, again, I'll let Mr. Hyatt explain the, the process with this one.
Uh, we are, uh, served by two appraisal districts since we crossed the county line. Uh, this is the, uh, Dallas Central Appraisal District's request for any nominations the Board may have to serve on their Board of Directors. Uh, Dallas County has a relatively unique and special way of selecting Board members. Uh, we are actually, uh, allowed to nominate a member, and then, uh, among all the other school districts, vote to elect one member to represent us. Uh, at this time, no one has expressed an interest in representing the district, we don't, we don't have a recommendation. Uh, the single, uh, school district representative that's, uh, has represented school districts in the past, I believe is continuing, Anna, but, but, uh, and we've had good representation, uh, but we have no one that's, from our particular district that we recommend, are recommending to place on this Board at this time. We placed it on the agenda just in case the, the Board had someone or that they wanted to propose and recommend, but staff has no recommendation.
So unless there is a nominee by the Board, it appears there is no action on?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So we're good on that item as is with no action. Item three F is consider all matters related to the nomination of members to be elected to the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Yes, Mr. Hyatt?
This is the other side of the county line, and Denton, this is, of course, not a district served by Denton County. Uh, Mr. John Mahalik has, was appointed to a fellow position in the last term, and he's expressed an interest in continuing serving the district. Uh, I've got no indication that that would not be a, he would not be a good representative. In fact, our staff tells us that he is represented as well, uh, and, uh, because of his interest and the lack of, of any negative, uh, information to the contrary, our staff recommends we respect Mr. Mahalik's request and nominate him to represent us.
Mr. Goode?
I'd like to make a comment first. I visited with the Chairman of the, the Committee, and he was extremely positive of John Mahalik. And I would like to nominate John Mahalik to continue to represent us.
I'd like to second that. Thank you, Ms. Chaffin, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Three G, consider a request for consent letter by Zale Corporation for foreign trade zone application to expand activity at current foreign trade zone and to expand the foreign trade zone boundaries. And at this time, we have two items that look sort of similar. Do we just want to take G first and then take H?
I was talking to Mr. Luna, we can do them collectively, I mean, you, there, there are actually two pieces of action that you'll have to take, um, and I'll let Mr. Luna explain what those two pieces are.
I may go ahead and read H, just in case we want to do that, and then I was going to also suggest on the audience for guests, what I'm going to do is let the staff make the presentation, kind of present the information, then let the audience for guests speak, and then let the Board have questions and discussion. Does that work for y'all? Okay, three H is consider approval of resolution in Zale Corporation foreign trade zone application to expand the foreign trade zone boundaries and activity within the current foreign trade zone.
Thank you.
Mr. Luna?
Thank you. The resolution addresses the proposed foreign trade zone agreement, uh, which is in your packet. Uh, that also supports the other item on the agenda, which is the letter, which is Zale Corporation has approached the district, uh, and asked that it be considered for approval, uh, which is why we're, we're here tonight discussing this particular item. Uh, first of all, this is a very unusual, uh, item for the Board to, to consider, we don't see this very often, once about every ten years or so. And, um, but nevertheless, this is a federal statute, uh, as opposed to the state statute regarding goods in transit. And under the federal statute of regarding foreign trade zones, uh, it is to encourage trade zones and subzones for the purpose of both, uh, commercial and industrial operations in the United States, to, to keep them here, uh, when they might otherwise consider, uh, sending them overseas. Uh, that's the sole purpose of this, and again, it's another community relations, business-friendly federal act. The Dallas-Fort Worth International Airport Board intends to file an application with the U.S. Department of Commerce, which, uh, would allow an expanded trade zone activity at Zale Corporation's current location, which is within the school district. Uh, and it would also expand the existing trade zone boundaries. Now, Zale Corporation has requested the district to execute the letter, which is in your packet there, uh, and, uh, that they do not, the district does not object to the Airport Board's request. The problem, of course, for the district is that in, in granting the request, if the federal, uh, U.S. Department of Commerce grants it, it would result in a loss of revenue and taxes for the school district because the inventory would become exempt, uh, which is in Zale's building. And, uh, in order to, to try and calculate that and figure out exactly what that loss would be to the district, Zale has, uh, invited their Vice President and Treasurer here tonight, and she's here, if you'd come forward, to talk about this a little bit and give you some of the facts. And then, as a result of that, uh, Zale has in turn suggested that because of the, uh, of the tax loss to the district, which they acknowledge will occur, and it would be a permanent loss, um, that they have, uh, offered after talking to pay three, the first three years' taxes, uh, which the district could lose in an approximate amount, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So they have offered to tender seventy-five thousand dollars to the district under an agreement in exchange for, uh, the district's support of this, uh, of this request to the federal government. Now, remember that the, uh, it is the, um, U.S. Department of Commerce which makes that decision, and, uh, they use a set of criteria, which, uh, and the criteria, the five items of them, there are only one of them, involves us, uh, that is, uh, whether or not there's a, a community and a local governmental support for this. So whether the district, uh, did or did not approve it, there's also always an opportunity that, uh, that it would, could be approved, even if this district voted to, to disapprove of the request. With that, I'd like Elizabeth Galloway, who is the Vice President and Treasurer of Zale Corporation, to give you some of the more details from their perspective. Uh, and you'll note, too, that the administration's recommendation on this is, is neutral, so it's strictly a matter of, uh, up to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, Board members, and those from administration, thank you very much for the time. We would like to just give you a little background, for those of you who don't know who Zale Corporation is. My name is Beth Galloway, I am, uh, the VP and Treasurer at Zale Corporation, and with me tonight is Alyssa Kramer, who is our Director and Senior Attorney at Zale Corporation. Being mindful that this is a complicated and probably unusual area for a school board to discuss, we asked, uh, two experts to join us. We have Bill Methanitis with Ernst &amp; Young, who practices in this area. You need help with the presentation?
If, if someone could, that would be marvelous.
Dr. Burning?
We did a PowerPoint presentation, and I'm noticing there's a password requirement.
I think we have someone that may know the password, possibly.
You know everything, right?
Yeah, I don't know this password. I may have asked Rick what the password is. Oh, wait.
Oh, good on. And our second expert is Christina Wood, who is with the DFW International Airport.
It's already loaded here, or there, either way. Thank you for noticing. Thank you so much. So a little bit about who we are. Zale Corporation's a leading specialty retailer of diamonds and other fine jewelry. Uh, we operate in North America, in the U.S., Canada, and in Puerto Rico, and we operate under a suite of nameplates, Zales, Zale Outlet, Gordon's. We also operate in Canada under Peoples, Mappens, and then we have another area, a kiosk business called Piercing Pagoda. We're located in Irving at nine oh one West Walnut Hill Lane. We are in the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District. This is a front view, this is an aerial view, sorry, it's a little fuzzy. This is where we have our store support center, where we have about a thousand employees, and we support the operations of about twelve thousand eight hundred employees, about eighteen hundred stores. This is the rear view. That's fine. We, we didn't know if you were familiar with the location. Uh, we are, we are very mindful of the financial situation for most government agencies, for the school boards. Um, we, we too are suffering with this economy. This is just a, a little table at the bottom from our, uh, recent, um, annual filing that indicates our, our pattern of revenues and our pattern of earnings, or should I say losses? Um, we, we had a very nice business going, we've had a lot of business disruptions, some from the economy, some for the way that our business was being managed. We've had a lot of transition with leadership, and in two thousand and nine, we launched and are in the process of executing a multi-year turnaround strategy, which is aimed at returning our company to profitability. We're seeking ways that we can improve our supply chain, make our operations more efficient. Foreign trade zone is one of the ways that we can do this. Um, we, we would gain benefit, uh, from some of the customs duties, which would be significant. Uh, it would also help us with just deferring and improving our cash flow so that we can, uh, more quickly fund the operations and return to profitability. Returning to profitability, of course, is in all of our best interests, uh, both the community, uh, the various school district, the City of Irving, uh, the County of, of Dallas, the State of Texas, et cetera. And therefore, we are looking to expand our foreign trade zone activities.
I want to talk a second about what a foreign trade zone actually is. It's kind of a foreign concept to a lot of people. An FTZ is a specified area designated by the United States Department of Commerce, where business may conduct international trade operations and receive relief from federal customs duties. It was created under the Foreign Trade Zone Act of nineteen thirty-four, under FDR, and the Department of Commerce generally provides FTZ grants of authority to public agencies to administer grants for a region. And in North Texas, the granting authority is, uh, the DFW International Airport. And Zale's fifteen-acre Irving campus, which is, uh, in, uh, in the ISD, has an FTZ designation that was obtained through DFW International Airport, and this is just a snippet of the grant. And this grant was, uh, provided in two thousand and one. And Zale is looking to expand the scope of its FTZ activities at the Irving campus to include, uh, activity both for U.S. sales as well as for Canadian sales, plus to add a small square footage of space, about twenty-eight hundred square feet, for a small, uh, laser lab for lasering etching diamonds for numbers. And as far as the impact on, uh, the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, um, Beth, you go ahead and, and discuss this?
Sure. Um, so we do recognize that there will be an impact, um, although we are doing it primarily for, for international, um, purposes, uh, we understand that there will be an impact on Carrollton Farmer Branch ISD. We estimate, based on two thousand and eleven values, uh, that there will be, um, an erosion in the tax base of about eight and a half million dollars of inventory. Uh, the value reduction would be effective in two thousand and twelve, and we have calculated that the dollar impact, uh, in revenues, uh, lost revenues to the, to the district would be about twenty-seven thousand dollars. Consequently, um, this reduction is only going to be in the interest in sinking fund collection results. Let's see, I have a calculation, which I think might just walk you through, instead of me just arbitrarily throwing out the number twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, from our, our actual renditions, we had two thousand, um, excuse me, in January of two thousand and eleven, we had inventory reported of a hundred and nineteen million dollars. We have a freeport exemption on that of approximately ninety-seven million. That leaves the currently taxable inventory at about twenty-two million, and the portion of that taxable inventory that is imported and would be exempt with the FTZ, about thirty-nine percent, comes out to about eight and a half million dollars. We would then apply the INS rate to it, and we, which is point zero zero three one six eight, and then we would come up with a net revenue impact of about twenty-seven thousand
Zale recognizes the revenue impact to the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, and it has offered to pay, um, a make a payment in lieu of tax in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, or approximately three times the estimated, uh, loss of the, the twenty-twelve loss. And we met with your staff about a month ago on this subject because we wanted to make certain that your concerns and needs were met, and we thought that we had a consensus on the way to handle the shortcoming and issued a check in good faith, and in the event that you agree, you can cash the check tomorrow. And the payment would be made in two installments, thirty thousand dollars immediately, and then forty thousand dollars in one year's time, and the twenty-twelve taxes wouldn't be due until February twenty thirteen. And- And in exchange for this payment, Zale is requesting a letter from the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD confirming that the ISD does not object to Zale's FTZ request to the Department of Commerce. And as far as why Zale's benefits from your letter, the process to expand the FTZ designation requires the Department of Commerce approval, and Zale can take advantage of an expedited process. That's what we're hoping to do, if we can do that and get your help. We would receive confirmation from the impacted, we have to receive confirmation from the impacted local authorities, and you're one of them, in order to do this. The city of Irving has already provided a letter, and this is their letter here. Dallas County has an FTZ policy that requires Zale to first obtain letters from the city and the school district, and Zale meets all of the other provisions of the Dallas County policy. The Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, incidentally, did provide a non-objection letter back in 2000, when Zale originally filed its FTZ request. And Zale has not offered to make, nor has it been asked to make any payments in lieu of tax to other jurisdictions. Carrollton Farmers Branch provided the letter originally to Zale, and Zale did not make any payments to Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. And this was the original letter from your ISD back in 2000. Now, as far as why Zale benefits from the letter elaborating a little bit, school district approval is not required from the, for the Department of Commerce for them to make the approval. A Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD non-objection letter is, however, necessary to use the expedited process, which, again, we're wanting to do, if you can help us to do that. Zale's other alternative is to pursue a much longer drawn-out process, and this will likely result in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD's being asked if it objects to Zale's application, and if so, why it objects. There's no precedential impact here. So in your providing the letter, it wouldn't require you to approve someone else's request. Any separate request by any other business would be subject to a completely separate application and a separate review process by Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. And we do want to note that the DFW Airport FTZ has been in place since 1979. The program itself, as I mentioned earlier, since 1934. And as we understand it, Zale is the only business ever to have approached Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD with such a request. And also, just as a side note, there's no connection with goods and transit with respect to this request. This is a completely separate deal altogether. And we want to thank everyone for their careful attention and thoughtfulness in this matter. And Bill Mathanitis is here to respond to any questions that you all may have. And Chris Wood here is also from the DFW International Airport Board.
So that would be your audience for guests. You're done with that part of your presentation?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And let me ask Ms. Wood, is there anything else you'd like to say, or would you like to speak to us, any?
I'm Christina Wood. I represent DFW International Airport. The airport is grantee of Foreign Trade Zone Number 39, and I am here to support Zale's request to expand its foreign trade zone boundaries by sponsoring Zale's application with the Foreign Trade Zones Board in DC. And I hope you'll consider approving both agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Burns?
Mr. Hyatt, do you have anything further to add regarding this agenda item?
Nothing other than to add that Mr. Mathanitis, representing Zales and Zale's Corp., has been very forthcoming, very open about this whole process. They provided all the information about what the process is. Frankly, they've educated us on what the process is. Mr. Luna's confirmed their educational process, but that's, I guess my comment is to congratulate and express my appreciation to Zale for being extremely forthcoming and open about what they're asking, what it means to them, and what it means to us. While there can be no absolute, long-term future quantification of the total cost of the district, the offer by Zale's to compensate us for approximately three years of lost tax revenue is, while not required by them, it's appreciated, is a good faith effort on their part.
Mr. Hyatt, do you, can you elaborate on what happened in 2000? Was it a similar process at that time?
I honestly don't recall it. That was probably 10, 11 years ago, the process we went through. I know that-
I thought your mind was like a steel trap.
I think Bill was actually, yeah, I was here, and I believe Bill was, Bill and I both were in the process at that time. And I'm not sure it's even absolutely required at this time. I think Dr. Griffin actually executed that agreement as Representative of the District, as Superintendent herself. I'm not believe, I'm not sure it actually requires board action this time. We just felt like, in this current financial situation, financial environment, it would be appropriate to have it publicly discussed and considered by the board. Is that right, Bill, as you recall?
Thank you.
Board, are there any questions? Ms. Klein, Ms. Chaffin?
Okay. If I recall correctly from what Mr. Luna was saying, this affects INS only?
Definitionally, it doesn't affect INS only, but only because of the way school funding formulas work. It removes the property value from our certified tax rolls at the state, and thereby lowering our values and indirectly increasing our state funding. So there might be a-
Right.
There might be some difference of the two, but essentially, it does wash out.
That was my next question, because the way the state funding formulas work today on target revenue, the state would make that up.
Exactly.
The same year.
There's no fault or benefit of Zale's or the law, it's just the way state funding in Texas works.
Right. So given that they've got Irving's approval, given that Dallas won't give their approval until, excuse me, Dallas County won't give their approval until we give an approval. You've been doing this since 2000? Oh, my goodness. That's amazing. Is there a reason why we shouldn't, given that we've got the-
Can I ask a couple of questions before we get?
Oh, sure.
Don't want me to step on your toes. Ms. Wood, can I ask you a question or two? You represent the DFW Airport Board.
Correct.
And you said that you're in support of this?
Yes.
Tell us why.
Well, as an airport, we're in a business that's bigger than just passengers and cargo. We're really in an economic development business in order to support the airport's growth and development. And so we believe that as businesses develop and grow across the region, and we support numerous other foreign trade zones across the metro area, that that will have a positive impact on the airport.
A positive economic?
By increasing cargo, passengers, international trade.
That's what I surmised your answer was going to be. I want to pose my dilemma to you. My dilemma is, on the one hand, this exemption may be granted regardless of the action we take. If we don't pass this resolution, Zale has to go through a longer process. And it obviously costs them money to do that. That's why they're tendering some money to us. And it may happen, and we may lose the tax money anyway. But my dilemma is, is if we approve this, we're getting three years of taxes, and we're essentially forfeiting all the years after three years. And I'd like you to speak to that, if you can, because I'm really struggling with that.
I can certainly speak to that. I would like to also allow Bill Mathanitis to speak to it as well.
Okay, because I think he, I brought you up here, and it may not have been fair to do that, but I wanted to hear your reasons why you're supporting it. Bill, can you, can you speak to that? In other words, I'm concerned that after year three, we lose $25,000 a year.
You're correct. If the inventory numbers stay the same, part of Zale's turnaround program, which they can tell you about in more detail, is a concerted effort to try to make those big numbers of inventory they're holding at the distribution center go down. The idea is to get the product to stores, let the stores sell it, and not hold it in a distribution center. So if that happens over time, to get the inventory values reduced, the amount of the foreign trade zone exemption reduces proportionally. Overall, business, of course, can grow and go up, but you measure inventory only on one day, on January 1st, and the inventory on that particular day is what's critical. So we're, you would be looking at a revenue loss based on collections for 2013, 14, and 15, to get to that breakeven. And then after that, you know, it's certainly whatever is out there would, you know, that would be exempt by the foreign trade zone would be lost by the district. It's just, it's very hard for Zale or anybody else to predict what that number might be and how effective the foreign trade zone might be, starting in 2016 and later.
But can't we be confident that if the exemption is, if the exemption is not granted, then what's the position regarding Zale's, with the $75,000, that they are tendering for our, I'm going to call it a consent letter?
Right.
Will Zale contend that, well, we paid our taxes by that $75,000?
They won't have-
The exemption is not granted by the-
By the Department of Commerce?
Department of Commerce.
Well, I think that's Zale's risk. I mean, they're, the agreement that you have in your packet, which Mr. Luna's office prepared, I've certainly been through, is a, they're making the payment in exchange for the letter, and you get the $75,000 regardless. Honestly, we're fairly confident that, particularly with the expedited process-
That it's going to be granted.
-that the foreign trade zone's bad, yeah, that we'll be able to get it approved.
It's a tough one.
If you don't go through the expedited process, is there any idea how long this is going to take you?
I would guess 10 months to a year. And with the expedited process, we expect to be done in December. If you're to take action tonight.
So anyway, Ms. Chaffin, to sponsor and answer to your question, a reason not to is you lose that taxation stream after the next three years.
Which we stand to lose anyway.
We stand to lose anyway, and that's why, how do you feel with a die?
Yeah.
And we're probably going to lose it, because more likely than not, it's going to be granted.
Well, Zale, I mean, I couldn't speak for the Department of Commerce, but Zale already has the grant, so, and this is looking to expand their ability to use the grant, so it's not like starting from scratch.
No, the, the odds are, it's going to be granted.
And Item 3H is approval of a resolution. Would that be something we would need to read, or?
Well, let Mr. Luna present it, but I don't believe we'd have to read the entire agreement, but he could summarize what it is. And it's essentially what Mr. Mathanitis has already offered, a payment in lieu of taxes in return for our endorsing their, or not opposing their application.
I have one more question.
Mr. Shore?
This probably needs to go to either Ms. Galloway or Ms. Kraus. Kramer, I'm sorry.
Would you like the lawyer or the Vice President?
I think I want the Vice President.
Okay. Ms. Galloway?
Ms. Galloway, you were the one who said things had turned south for a period of time, for a lot of people.
Agreed.
Turning south means not as economically, okay.
Profitable. Tough economic times, yes, sir.
Okay. Assuming this board approves the action and gives the letter that you're seeking, are times so tough that I have to worry about the $40,000 check next year?
No, sir. I also manage the cash flow.
And you'll safeguard that 40?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll hold you to that.
Okay.
And he will.
Good question for her, not the attorney, right?
Yeah, the attorney probably doesn't want me to say that.
Are there any other discussion items, or? Board, are there any?
Yeah.
Mr. Shore?
With the least confidence I've ever mustered on a motion, I move that we approve the letter that they're requesting be signed by us.
So would that be 3G, Mr. Hyatt? Will you help us with what our task is?
That is 3G. That is 3G. You're authorizing administration to execute the consent letter.
And I have the least enthusiasm for any motion I've ever made.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, Ms. Chaffin. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Mr. Hyatt, what is, or Dr. Burns, what is our next step?
3H, we need to complete as well, right, Mr. Luna?
I ask Mr. Luna, just to briefly summarize, and like I said, we've covered the high points, but, Mr. Luna, would you summarize the agreement that we're suggesting the board execute related to this, to the last action?
Yes, the resolution simply states that the board authorizes the staff, and as well as the President of the Board, Secretary, to enter into a written agreement with Zale's regarding the application to be filed with the Airport Board for an expansion of trade zone activity. Also, that the individuals are authorized to sign it, the President, the Vice President, and Secretary of the Board, as well as the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Support Services, all to be signed that. Any other addendums or any other document necessary to close this transaction effectuate the purposes of the resolution. Right behind that is the actual foreign trade zone agreement itself, which simply sets out the recitals, the wheresses, and the law that we've already discussed. And after that, it sets out the points of the agreement. Number one, that the company will submit an executed version of this agreement to the Board of Trustees, which they have already done. Number two, that the total payments required by the company are, A, $30,000 due on or before October 6, 2011, which has been received by the district; B, that a $45,000 check would be received on or before October 6, 2012. The third point is that the district agrees it will not oppose the application and will execute the letter, and that it does not object to the Airport Board's efforts to expand the company's foreign trade zone. Number four, the company will also pay the cost of any legal fees incurred in the future by the district as a result of the company's request to revise this agreement, regardless of whether or not such request is granted by the Board of Trustees of the district. Number five, that the agreement is executed by all parties here with substantial consideration. And number six, all conditions are binding upon all successors. And then sets venue in Dallas County. Number nine, laws of the state of Texas apply. And number 10, all the parties necessary and are authorized to sign this agreement who sign it below. And those are the highlights of the agreement. Now, you'll note that in response to one of the questions that came up, nothing in here guarantees that the application will be granted. This is solely in exchange for the agreement and the payments.
How can we bind a future board?
Well, you cannot bind a future board.
But it binds the successors.
Successors and assigns. Successors and assigns. There would not be any assignments or successors to the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District normal. So that, it wouldn't affect new board members. The contract itself would be binding on the district.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Shore?
With the same amount of enthusiasm as I had for the letter, which is not very much, I move that we approve this resolution.
I'll second. You go, second. Ms. Watten?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Watten. All those in favor? Those unanimous? Thank you.
And may I make a comment? Sales, we know you guys are going to be successful. You sell great jewelry. I love your jewelry. So when you get really successful again, you'll really support our educational foundation, right?
Yes, sir.
Score. Thank you.
Thank you for your time here tonight. We appreciate your, Mr. Luna's information that you provided to the board, because this is something we don't see real often, and we appreciate the staff's recommendation, not recommendation, but information.
Right. And Ms. Klein, I echo Mr. Hyatt's comments. We appreciate Zale Corporation's forthcoming and working with us so cordially from the very beginning. So it's good to have them as a partner, and as Ms. Chaffin said, a continued partner in our foundation efforts as well. So thank you.
Wish you continued success. At this time, we're at Item 4, comments from board members. And 4A is comments regarding posted agenda items. Board, are there any comments regarding posted agenda items? Then we'll move to Item 5. Item 5 is a closed session, item, closed meeting, as authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071, consultation with attorneys, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel matters, 551.0- real property, 551.074, personnel matters, 551.076, security devices, 551.082, school children, district employees, disciplinary matter or complaint, 551.0821, personally identifiable student information, 551.084, investigation. Tonight, we're going into closed session under 5A, superintendent evaluation is authorized under Texas Government Code, 551.074, personnel matters. We'll recess this open session at 9:01 and reconvene in a closed session at 9:10 for Agenda Item 5A. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place in open session after the Board reconvenes in the open meeting. So, we will reconvene at 9:10. Thank you.
You ready? Mr. Sands says he's ready. Ms. Klein?
Just a minute.
Guess we could wait a little bit till the crowd fills back in.
You can use that one. Feel free to use it, it's just fine.
We will convene this meeting in open session at 10:10 for Agenda Item 6, reconvene public being to vote on matters considered in closed meeting. 6A is consider all matters related to superintendent evaluation. Board, are there any items to be acted on at this time?
Ms. Klein, there's nothing to be acted on. We did conduct the superintendent's evaluation during closed session, and we want to thank him for his efforts on behalf of the district.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Hearing, are there any other items to discuss, or are we done? And by my determination, are we are now at the end of our agenda? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're adjourned at 10:11 PM. Thank y'all.
I don't know if you're, I don't-